Okay. Okay, great. I call this December 11th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. First thing on the agenda is to approve electronic participation request. Just to let everyone know, Mr. Cross is in El Salvador, is that correct, Mr. Cross?
Yes, I am on a missions trip, finishing up a 10-day missions trip here in El Salvador.
Yes, so we're going to have him join us remotely. But first, before we can do that, we have to approve that he joins us remotely. So, members, do you have a motion to approve that?
I move to approve Matt Cross's request to participate electronically in this December 11th, 2023 meeting of the Rockingham County School Board, in which a quorum is physically present.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Mr. Dixon and Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve Matt Cross's request to participate electronically. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Now we need to approve the agenda. Members, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Falk, do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, if you're able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is recognitions. And the first recognition we have is from Ms. Carrie Gray. There you are. For our National FFA teams.
Your Honor, Dr. Shiflett, thank you for giving me an opportunity this evening to introduce these talented and committed FFA members and their advisors for their accomplishments at National FFA Convention in November. Career development events and leadership development events, as competitions in FFA are named, are an opportunity for students to extend what they've learned in the classroom. It's a co-curricular organization, meaning no agriculture education program is complete without an FFA chapter, so that those students can have additional opportunities to learn leadership skills, practice those skills, and then through experiential, hands-on learning, practice career skills that's going to support and help them in their future. I see a lot of family members in the audience tonight, so I would be remiss not to take an opportunity to thank them for supporting their students with the countless hours of practice and perfecting their projects and all the support that they've given them, so that they could participate in these opportunities. I am going to ask the advisors from the schools present to introduce their teams and students, but Elizabeth Lee, an advisor at Spotswood High School, is not able to be with us this evening. So I would like to introduce Gary Vance. And as you guys come up, if you can kind of start filling in the wings of the room, and then we'll come around. And Gary, this is his, you may or may not know that National FFA has, you can come up a little bit more, yeah, a National FFA Band and a National FFA Chorus. It is a highly selective process. And not only a National FFA Band this year, but this is his second year of participation. So we're very proud that he was representing us. ... together their performances, so it's really quite a feat. And he also serves as Chapter Secretary at Spotswood. And so I think we'll start with Gee Frank Hilliard, and Mr. John Welsh is here to introduce them tonight.
Thank you, Carrie, and School Board. I will start off with, we got a couple groups of individuals to be recognized here tonight. We'll start off with our poultry judging team. If you guys will go and start making your way up here. That team consists of two students who are still middle school students, Madeline Schwager and Shaylee Two-Seen, and then two seniors that were middle schoolers when they won the opportunity to represent, but are now at Broadway High School, Luke Hill and Easton Showalter. So, they competed in poultry judging a year ago and won the junior contest at the state contest, which doesn't allow them to participate in the national contest, since they're still considered junior members. And so, this past April, they asked me if they could participate as seniors just for fun. And so we said yes, not really having a lot of expectation. Turns out, they did beat all of the high school teams as middle school, 7th and 8th graders, and earned the opportunity to go to National Convention. And as if that wasn't enough, they then decided they wanted to participate in our state Avian Bowl competition, where they also beat all the high school students. So, anyway, so they competed at the National Convention this year in the Poultry CDE. They performed admirably. I think they were a little shaken when they walked into the room and saw that they were about a foot and a half shorter than everybody else in the entire competition. So, anyhow, they ended up with a bronze team certification. Ms. Gray had asked if the students would also maybe come up and talk to you and explain a little bit about what was involved in the contest, some of the skills they learned. So Luke drew the short straw in representing the poultry team, so.
So we went to National Convention and competed in poultry judging. And like Ms. Welsh said, me and Shaylee got silver individual ratings, and Easton and Maddie got bronze. Our whole team got a bronze rating. And we were a little behind everybody else since we were in middle school, but we did good for competing, so.
Okay, so do we want, because we left poor Gary standing there. How about as you come up, you guys come through and shake our hands, and then we'll give Gary the podium for just a second, and then we'll come back to.
So this year, it was my second year at the National FFA Band. Last year, I was the only one from. So, I hopped on a plane to Indiana and had a super fun time bonding with my. This year, we had someone from Washington, last year, we had someone from Alaska. So it was, it's been a privilege to be in the band. And yeah, I would definitely do it again, but I can't, because I can only do two years, so. Yeah.
Thank you very much, let's give Gary another round. And then, did we want a picture of everybody at the end? So don't go too far, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Welsh.
All right, the next group we're going to recognize actually worked with my coworker, Paris Black. She is the other half of the Welsh-Black Dynamic Duo at our school. And so she helped prepare our students that participated in the Agri-science Fair, along with Ms. Jackie Lor as well, so we shout out to Jackie. We'll start off with Avery Cafrey and Ella Beagle, a few ladies will come forward. So they participated in the Science Fair competition at our state contest. They developed a project in the category of food products and systems. And so we'll let them tell you a little bit about what was involved in their research project. So they were selected as the state winner and went on to represent at the national contest. They did get the opportunity to actually participate at the Eastern States Exposition as well, sort of a practice contest before the national contest. And so, at the national contest, they were recognized onstage. Correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, third place in the entire country, which is certainly. Proud of them and all the work they did. And I think maybe Ella, or do you want to come jointly and talk about your project? Our next group was our second group in the Agri-science Fair competition. John Havlin and Branson Arbogast, a few boys will come on up. They're a little less academic, as you might guess. And so, in looking for a topic to research, they were looking for something that may be a little more hands-on related, and so they selected the power structural systems, and which has to do with sort of anything that has motors on it. And so I'll let them come up and tell you what they researched. They won at state level also, and I believe were fifth at the national contest, so congratulations.
We took the varying angles of a chainsaw chain, and we did 35 degrees and 25 degrees, and see what cut faster and more efficiently. And we found that 25-degree cut faster and made a cleaner cut.
And I think we have one other student here, Jack Arbogast, if you want to come up here. Jack didn't plan on getting recognized, but I'll throw him under the bus. So, he got signed up at the last minute to participate in a National FFA Quiz Bowl contest. And so, wasn't exactly a lot of prep for that. They ended up being the fourth team in the nation in that as well, so.
And I didn't really care for it, but I placed better than Callan Burke, who actually tried. And it was pretty fun, but I got, I don't know, but thank y'all.
And I will call to the podium Janay Pettit from Broadway High School to introduce her students and teams.
Good evening, I'm Janay Pettit, and one of the agriculture education teachers at Broadway High School. This year, my two counterparts and I, Ms. Kendall Simmons and Mr. Herb Hoffett, worked with a few individuals, and we had four teams who qualified to compete at national levels in different contests. So if y'all want to come forward, yeah, all of you. Right, and high schoolers lead busy lives. So we have most everybody here with us this evening. A few people couldn't make it, but we will mention them. So we'll start with our Environmental Natural Resources Team. Jackie and I tag teamed this. And so, we had four individuals who worked really, really hard since early in the spring, and we pulled off a win at the state level and were able to go compete nationally. And they pulled off a silver ranking, and we had a bronze, two silver, and one gold ranked individual. So those team members were Cole Nicely and Haylen Keller couldn't be here with us this evening, but we do have Thomas Lor and Rachel Havlin. So I'll have them come up and tell you a little bit about their contest.
I'm Rachel Havlin, and we're from the Broadway FFA Chapter. We competed in the Environmental and Natural Resources Team at the national level. We placed, me and Thomas both got silver rating, and our team placed silver.
So yeah, we competed in the Environmental Natural Resource CDE. And basically, what you do is you identify different native species, do water quality tests, texture soil. You can do basically anything with the environment, depending on the chosen topic for that year.
There was even a GPS unit that none of us were very good at.
Yeah, we had to push through that one a little hard, but we got it done, and we definitely enjoyed being out there, even though we almost froze our fingertips off.
It was very cold. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll recognize Ayla Janney. So Ayla competed in the Employment Skills Career Development Event, and so I'll let her tell you about what that contest is. But it was kind of funny how Ayla ended up in this contest, because she had tried a couple other things, and you know, we got to the state convention, and we really just, Ayla was throwing her hat in the ring, and you know, we're just try one more contest, I'd like to go to the state convention, we'll have a good time. And she ended up winning the whole thing. So, and then she went to do very well at national conventions, so I'll let her tell you about that.
My name is Ayla Janney, and I competed in Employment Skills. So Employment Skills is you submit a resume and cover letter of your job of your choice. I got to submit about a job internship with another dairy farm in Wisconsin. So that was a really great opportunity. We also did virtual and in-person interviews. We did written correspondence with letter and email. So like Ms. Pettit said, I just was like, hey, this looks like a fun contest, let's try it. I tried it and somehow won at state convention, and then I had the opportunity to represent the state at national convention, which I ended up getting a bronze rating and had an amazing time.
Katie Payne couldn't be here with us this evening. I think she might actually be working the FFA Food Drive at the Timerville Walmart. So I think she's doing another FFA thing this evening. But Katie participated in the Extemporaneous Public Speaking Contest. And in that contest, students try to prepare as best they can by studying and collecting resources on current events in agriculture, and you know, studying everything they can about the agriculture industry. But they really don't receive their topic on what they're going to speak about until the day of the contest. So Katie received her topic and was given 30 minutes to write a four-to-six-minute speech, and she did very well. She placed, or she was a bronze-rated individual. So, you know, I have to commend her. It's taken me years to be able to feel comfortable speaking in front of others, you know, off the cuff. And so, at a high school level, as a high school senior, she was willing to do that at the national level, just totally, you know, to totally wing that and rely on her knowledge. So she did very well with that, we were proud of her for that. And then our last team that we had at National Convention was our Dairy Evaluation Team. Those team members include Herschel Hoffett, who couldn't make it this evening, Julia Havlin, Romney Ritchie, and Maggie Toothman. And so I'll let them tell you about their contest.
So my name is Romney Ritchie, I competed in the Dairy Evaluation Contest. It was spanned over a period of two days. And the first day, we got into the contest, and we completed a general knowledge exam, which we were scored on. It was a test that, just general knowledge about the dairy industry, general knowledge about milk products. So we did that, and then we completed a team problem, where we were given a scenario in which a dairy farm had a problem, and our team had to work together in order to solve that problem. So, yeah, that was day one, and I think Maggie's going to talk to y'all about day two.
My name is Maggie Toothman, and during day two, we judged six classes, three cattle, or three cow classes and three heifer classes, and then proceeded to give three sets of reasons. So that was, oh, we did for day two.
Yeah, I'm Julia Havlin, and in conclusion, we had a lot of fun working together, and we actually placed 10th overall, and we're a gold-rating team. So we're all very happy with that, so, yeah.
Thank you very much for recognizing this hard work. Come on up. This is my livestock judging team from Mass Nutt and Technical Center, and kind of like what Mr. Welsh said, this story started about two years ago. The girls, Malena, Carrie, and Brooke, were members of another livestock judging team, along with Ella Warrens, that was third in the state, and got an opportunity to go judge in Denver. We picked up Sarah for that contest, and that started last January. Then they worked very hard all through the spring and won the state FFA contest by quite a nice little margin. And then we worked all summer and went into the fall, went to several contests. And on top of that, I want to recognize Carrie, Malena, and Sarah. Not only were they doing FFA livestock judging, they were also doing 4H Stockman's, 4H meets judging, and Sarah was a member of the state 4H livestock judging team. So they've been through quite a few national contests here in the last little bit. Thank you to the School Board and the school system for allowing these kids to miss that much class and keep up with their work, and not put them on the truancy list. At this time, at the National FFA Contest, Brooke was a silver individual, Carrie was a silver individual, Malena was a gold individual and 14th highest contestant overall, and Sarah was a gold individual and third highest individual overall. And for that, she's going to be receiving a nice check through National FFA. Overall, the team was gold, one of 13 gold teams, and overall, third-placing team at the national contest, one of the highlights of my career. They also have been invited to judge in Scotland this summer, so you'll be getting a field trip request for that sometime soon, if they decide they can afford it and want to go. So girls, why don't y'all come up here and tell them a little bit about the contest?
Hello, my name's Malena Ritchie. So on the first day of our contest, we had 12 classes of livestock that we had to judge. Three were Keep Coal, we had one performance class, and then we had some other classes that we just had to place. So they ranged from beef cattle, sheep, goats, and hogs. Which ones you'd rather take away? And then as individuals, we did that, and we all collected together for the team problem, where we all evaluated. And I wanted to emphasize that not only livestock judging has given us the opportunity to make connections with other FFA members from across the country, but it's also allowed us to expand our knowledge of the agriculture industry and sharpen our leadership skills in the area of confidence, decision-making, and public speaking.
Hello, I'm Carrie Miller, and in preparation for our contest in January, our team from our last year's state convention was able to travel to the National Western Contest in Denver, Colorado. So we started off the year with that, and then we traveled around from Rockingham, Augusta, and Chanado County for our practices.
Okay, so everybody come on back up, and we're going to get a picture of everybody up here now. Okay, did we get all the pictures? Well, we're still getting the last couple of pictures. I just want to say how so very, very proud. I might even get a little teary up here. I'm so proud of each of you all. Most of you all, I've known since you were tiny, and I've watched you all in your FFA journey. And guys, this is what it's all about. It's about our kids, and look at how amazing they are. Look at how amazing they're turning out. And seconding what Ms. Gray said, a lot of this is because of the parents sitting down in front of you all. So I want you guys to all go give your parents a big hug, except you. Give your parents a big hug and say thank you for supporting my FFA career. Thank you, guys. Okay, now we're going to move on to our CPS School Board members' recognition. Dr. Larry Shiflett.
Thank you, Chair Lor. It is my honor and privilege to recognize three board members this evening for their service to Rockingham County Public Schools. And combined, there's almost 30 years of service that they have dedicated to serving on the school board. I'm going to start with our rookie member, Mr. Jack Dixon. He served for almost a half a year, five months, filling a vacancy in District 3. And I have really enjoyed working with Mr. Dixon. You know, he could have easily stepped into that role and said, I'm just here to fill a seat. I'll come and look pretty on Monday nights and smile and wave. But he leaned in to the work, and to the point where he would get phone calls from upset parents. Usually, they would call me, and then I would upset them, and then they would call him. And so, but he would lean in, and he would listen, and he'd be very thoughtful, and then he and I would speak, and then on several occasions, he said, I'll follow up and take care of this. And so, it's just been a pleasure to work with him, and I consider him a friend, and hopefully, we can still continue to stay connected. So on behalf of the School Board, we have a little plaque here, and I'll read this. It says, "Rockingham County School Board expresses its sincere appreciation to Jackson A. Dixon for outstanding and dedicated service to the students and staff of Rockingham County Public Schools." So thank you, Jack. So next, I would like to recognize Dr. Charlotte McQuilkin. She has served, will be eight years, two terms on the board. And she has served the students and the employees in our community steadfastly for these eight years, unwavering in her commitment to do what's right for students. And I'll tell this little story quickly. It's not really a School Board story, but it's a Charlotte McQuilkin story. So as a young man, when I was first beginning to teach, right, I was just entering the. when I was first beginning to teach, right, I was just entering the teaching profession. I had an orientation at Spotswood High School. I, I don't remember much about that orientation. Two things I remember. Number one, John Kidd said he wouldn't fire me. I don't know if he meant me personally, but just in general, first year teachers for not being very good at their job. So I was very happy to hear that. Job security is an important thing. And then the second thing I remember about that orientation, it was like three days. You know, 24 hours, I guess, and I learned two things, but this is good. I mean, I've been, it's been a while, right? We had a session, these sessions in the afternoon where we had to go around to various classrooms and learn from different folks. And at that time, Dr. McQuilkin was serving as the director, I think of EL Services maybe, or I can't remember that, right? But the one thing I do remember is, uh, she said to us as, you know, new aspiring teachers, "Don't have barriers between you and the students. Don't stand behind the podium. Always be out in the classroom. Never put anything between you and the students." And so to this day, I do not stand behind a podium or lectern when I, except for school board meetings, I guess, um, when I, when I don't have to, right? And it's all because of, uh, just a comment she made to us about removing barriers from you and other people. And that's, that stuck with me all those years. So Dr. McQuilkin, I want to thank you for that advice and thank you for all your years of service as a school board member and also as a wonderful employee. All right, and then Mr. Lowell Folk is completing, I believe, a 12-year term. And previously, prior to that, he spent eight years on the school board, so 20 years, two decades, uh, longer than some of these guys in the blue jackets have been alive, right? So he's been working at this, uh, again, with a passion to do what's right for students, uh, to make Rockingham County Public Schools a great place. And, uh, I shared with him the other day, um, I remember when I was a teacher, again, going back in time, uh, meeting at Pence Middle School and Mr. Folk walked in as a school board member and greeted me. And I thought, how pleasant and what a pleasant demeanor he carried and still does and his passion for students and his care for teachers. And so, um, I consider him a close friend. He and I enjoy going to have lunch from time to time and, and talking about all things. And, um, he's, he's gonna, you know, he's gonna be missed by Rockingham County Public Schools. So Mr. Folk, thank you for all of those years of service, sir. And last, I would like to recognize, um, Jackie Lohr as serving, uh, this year as the Chair of the Rockingham County School Board. Mrs. Lohr and I, since I started in July, we had a sort of a standing arrangement. We would meet on the Tuesday after board meetings on Monday so we could plan the next agenda, always trying to stay ahead of the curve. And I appreciate her leadership and, and working with me as a rookie superintendent and trying to help me navigate this world. So, um, Mrs. Lohr, thank you for your service and we also have a plaque for you and it has a gavel attached to it.
Well, is, are you gonna hang around for a little while? Okay, we'll do it at the end then. Thank you. Sometimes she tries to slip out, so I wanted to make sure we had that. Okay. Actually, we could do it now because I think we're gonna take a quick, there, we're, oh, no, wait, I'm sorry. Inspire Awards. Okay, and it says Lowell Folk. Um, okay. Okay, so we're gonna get, we're gonna start with Lowell.
Janet Hadley, would you come to the lectern, please? Into my newly assigned classroom in the annex of Broadway High School and came face to face with someone who would influence the arc of my entire life. She had bright red hair and sparkling eyes. I have been privileged to have learned from some of the finest educators who have existed. But I must acknowledge that the individual who inspired me to my life path is Janet Hadley. I had never encountered a teacher who addressed her students as her students were expected to address their teachers. I was Mr. Folk to her Mrs. Hadley. I don't recall Ms. Hadley ever lecturing in class. She led us to think. She led us to question. She led us to be curious and she led us to research. I was a country farm boy who learned to thirst for understanding of so much because of Janet Hadley. Redwood forests, international relations and policy, municipal policy and practice. Janet Hadley cultivated thought and curiosity. Janet Hadley cultivated inquiry. As my last official act as a board member for Rockingham County Public Schools, I am very honored and humbled with this Inspire Award. Jan, Miss Hadley, you have inspired me to be my best self and I...
Thank you, Lord.
These are awards? And you actually present it? And here's the tops of it, isn't it?
Lowell is one of many of students and they were all fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Um, and the Inspire Awards are typically given at the, at the schools when we visit, but, um, they are sponsored by Riffy and anybody, anybody can write a, um, Inspire Award to honor, uh, a teacher or a staff member who's done something special for you all. Uh, and that was wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Folk. And I, I lied a little bit. I, I misspoke. I, we don't have any public comments, so we're gonna go on to board member comments and then we'll take a five-minute recess to let you guys go. So hang with me just a little bit longer and we're gonna start board member comments with, um, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you Chair Lohr. Uh, sorry that you folks had to be forced to endure my comments this evening. I like to highlight the people in the division that I've gotten to meet and know and work with over the last six months. I've been here for about six seconds. Been a wonderful opportunity to meet the men and women that, that are really behind this division. Uh, and thinking about my time, the, the best thing that I've learned is that we have dedicated staff that we talk about a lot. We talk about their hard work. We talk about their dedication. We talk about what they put into the system, but it's hard to quantify that. And so, um, this morning, I called Dr. Amy Pater, Head of HR, and I asked her a little too much. I asked her to put together years of service for the entire division. And I realized as soon as I said that, that it was Monday morning, about 10 hours before the meeting and she probably had better things to do. So I said, "Let's look at Central Office and use that as a sample." So there are 33 leadership positions in Central Office and each of those are individually filled. So of those 33 people, there are 32 master's degrees, uh, 32, there are four people that have two or more master's degrees. There's seven PhDs and there's one nationally certified board teacher. But the meat of that, and this is the most important number, is that there's 612 combined years of service to Rockingham County specifically and total years of service of 795 years between 33 people. And if you quantify that across the entire division of 1,200 people, how many years of service do we have that are helping build this? So we can say that teachers are dedicated. We can talk about it like this, but when we quantify it, we know they're underpaid. So I wanted to thank the people in the division. Doug Aldifer over there, he was my elementary school. Sitting on this board and then working with. It's been super special. I want to thank my board, fellow board members for trusting me to serve District 5 for the last six months and it's been a true honor. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin.
Usually we talk about what happens between the last board meeting and the current board meeting and so I'm going to stay true to form and, uh, talk about the highlights between these two board meetings. First of all, we all went to the Massanut and Technical Center Board Meeting, uh, last Monday evening and found out that Massnut and Technical Center has the highest enrollment they have ever had in its history. And that speaks volumes. Speaks volumes for the programs that we have and the work that is going on in Massnut and Technical Center. And then I was told that, uh, we have won a national award and I think it's going to be on, on the TV. I'm sure it'll be in the paper. And it's, uh, Kim Capasso and Tabitha Daniel, who are two instructors at Massnut Technical Center, entered a contest sponsored by Skills USA to, uh, do it, do a, a mock-up or a, uh, I guess it's an architectural drawing of the commanders. We're talking about the NFL football team, the commander's new, new stadium. And, uh, Kim Capasso's group worked on the architecture and the design of this and Tabitha Daniel's group worked on the 3D animation part of it. And they won out of the entire contest in the nation. So we're really, really proud of the work that's going on. But even beyond that, each of the individual students are gaining a lot in Massnut Technical Center. So we're saying hats off this evening to them. And my second one is that I was, uh, spent the morning, or a good part of the morning, at Turner Ashby High School where Alicia Corral Clark invited the Merck, uh, organization to come in and sponsor four classes for the students who are in the ELL program. Right now it's the juniors and the seniors. We, they talked about, uh, essential life skills and today's session was, was about uh, introduction to criminal law, but they also talked about, uh, banking basics and good citizenship. And everybody works together. We're bringing the community into the schools and the schools into the community. So those are my highlights.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Cross, are you still with us? Okay, maybe we'll circle back to Mr. Cross. Mr. Folk?
I just want to say that I have had 20 years of highlights in Rockingham County Public Schools and I'm very honored to have served. I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've been able to make and I'm very, very proud of the division itself and all the wonderful dedicated people. And I'm proud of you students because you are who this is all for. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, we still don't have Mr. Cross? Matt, if, if you wanna pipe in whenever, if you can hear me. Um, but I'll go ahead and go. It, it's been a week, y'all. Uh, and there's a lot going on, but definitely my highlight is you all tonight. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for representing, all of our students for representing Rockingham County so well. Thank you, Ms. Hadley, for, for all of your, all you've done for Rockingham County Public Schools. And thank you to our board members, cuz, um, Dr. Shiflett, you and I are the only ones that are gonna be back up here, that are up here right now. Are you ready for this? We, that are sitting here right now. Yeah. Um, so to, to the rest of you all, thank you so very much for all of your service. Those who, who stood up and, and served when no one else would. Oh, hey, there's Matt. Can you hear us? I don't think we have volume. Okay, we still don't have, we don't have volume, so let me, let me just finish up. But thank you, Dr. McQuilkin, Mr. Folk, Mr. Breedon, we celebrated him earlier. Thank you all for being part of the Rockingham County School, Public Schools. Thank you for making, um, it a great place for students to learn and right here's your proof. So thank you all. Okay, Mr. Cross, can we hear you now? Nope. We can see your lips moving. Maybe I can try to, to lip read. So you said, "You're doing great" and, um, "Your highlight is being on a mission trip this week." Okay, and, and congratulations and thank you for service to those of us, to, to the fellow board members that are leaving. You talked about that at the last meeting, so I'll reiterate that for you tonight. And, um, that about does it, right? Sure, more or less. Maybe we can get some volume for you soon. Uh, in the meantime, I'm gonna go with, uh, Dr. Shiflett.
All right. Thank you Chair Lohr. Uh, first of all, I do want to give another shout out to our, our FFA students who are here tonight. So in many instances, they were talking about sort of a moment in time when they had to demonstrate their knowledge or their skills or their aptitudes. But they had to spend hours and days prepping for that moment to get ready. So I commend you for your efforts to be acknowledged, um, at whatever level, state level, national level. That's awesome. And also kinda reiterate what Chair Lohr said about, uh, loving on your parents, right? Because, um, they're there supporting you, picking you up, dropping you off, you know, doing all those other things, getting supplies, whatever it takes to help you be successful. They, they want you to be successful. I can assure you of that. And, uh, I'm a lifelong learner, so two things I've gained tonight is that when I, next time I go to the shop to get my change sharpened, I will ask for a 25-degree, um, angle on that sharpening. And, and now I am confirmed, I have researched that supports that cow's milk has the most calcium. So when my wife tries to persuade me otherwise with almond milk, I will tell her we will not defer from cow's milk. So again, thank you. Uh, also two other, just kinda quick, one's a sort of, oh, not really a highlight in some ways, but, uh, yet another. So you've probably heard on the news, we had a, unfortunately we had a bus accident on Friday morning, bus 89, and that's not the highlight, okay? So understand, okay? I'm encouraging that. However, how our folks responded was a highlight. Uh, we had, um, no major injuries, just a few minor injuries, kids in and out at RMH, just five kids. But we had so many staff members who stepped up and to help. Uh, Mr. Gien, the AP at Montevideo, Mr. Bond, the AP at Spotswood. Uh, our supervisor of HR, Cam McKite, was just driving to work and recognized the bus accident and stopped and assisted. And, and then our, um, Director of Transportation was driving another bus. He comes to the accident to transport those kids who need to go to school. And our supervisor of transportation, Travis Weeks, was there and he was communicating with me. And then, um, Dr. Doug Aldifer, uh, he, oh, sorry, my screen went blank. He reported to the hospital along with Camel and Will and Jeff to be there. And then, uh, Mrs. Williams was at Montevideo helping communicate with families. And so all these folks who just went above and beyond their normal duties of the day to help our students, help our families. Uh, and then the fire and rescue, uh, those folks came out to support in the Sheriff's Department. So many, many, many people stepped up to, to assist and we're so grateful for that. That's the highlight, right? Something bad happened and the people in Rockingham County do what we always do. We lend a hand, we help out. That's just how we do business. That's the Rockingham way. So that's, that's my highlight from that tragedy. And either Mr. Dixon, we were, I always tried to communicate with the board and he's like, "Hey Larry, do, do you need me to go to the, to the scene? You need me to go to the hospital?" And I said, "Not, I think we have it covered." But that's the people who step up and say, "We wanna help out. There's something going on and we're gonna do our part, even more than our parts." I'm very thankful and grateful to all those folks. So we had a, a parent sent a really nice email and she's kind of just described this and said how grateful she was, uh, to be a parent, um, in Rockingham County, cuz that's how we do business. And then the last highlight I want to share is that, uh, this coming weekend, I plan to attend, uh, our first ever fall musical. So we usually musicals are in the spring. So we try to offer one in the fall and Spotswood High School will be doing Mean Girls. This, don't be getting any ideas, but anyway, that's what the musical is, Mean Girls, and I hope to enjoy that this Sunday. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Now, thank you all for coming. If you want to slip out, we'll take a five-minute recess to let you guys slip out. Thank you.
Hey, Matt, I could see you just joined the meeting. Can you go ahead and try and say something? We'll see if we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Great, great.
Okay.
I'll stay, stay unmuted until we join again, and then I'll, I'll speak and give my lights.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Hey, thanks, Greg, for all you're doing.
Gladly.
We're back in session. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Members, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I move to approve the minutes of the November 27, 2023 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. As presented, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the bills in mileage.
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the November bills as presented.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett, do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the November 2023 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the bills in mileage, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Budget amendment, all in plan. Mr. Moyers.
Good evening, Chair Lohr, members of the board. Dr. Shiflett, you have in front of you this evening an amendment to the budget for the All-in-One Virginia Plan that we received from the state in the past couple of months. So, over the next three years, or the next six months, we have the next three years to spend. We received $3,970,697. And this allocates that funding to this year's budget. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Do you have a recommendation?
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the budget amendment as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett, do I have a motion?
Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any discussion? Any? Was in favor of the superintendent's recommendation? I'm sorry. Mr. Cross, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. Is, does these funds have any limitations on them or that they allocate to the division to spend at our will?
So, they, they had recommendations. We had to submit a plan to the state of Virginia that had to be approved. They want, they had recommended 70% be spent on tutoring efforts, 20% be spent on the Virginia Literacy Act, and 10% be spent on chronic absenteeism. So, we took this money and we have allocated it towards our teachers' assistants that we had in the building that were part-time, and they became full-time through our CARES money. And they will remain full-time with this money over the next three years to help provide tutoring support and also provide time for teachers learning letters, which is part of the Virginia Literacy Act. We also allocated money for chronic absenteeism. For software to help with learning loss as well as new curriculum for reading. And so, that's where the money.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And I believe you have another presentation for us.
Yes, so included in your packets for this evening are the updated salary handbooks effective January 1, 2024, to show the 2% raise increase that you all approved last board meeting.
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the amended salary scales for the fiscal year 2024 as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion?
Does that move?
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? Anyone? Okay, where is this? Where is it? It's, because I'm not seeing it anywhere. I might not be logged in properly, but it's in the executive content? Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I can arrange that.
Okay. It's just I save them through the years. I don't know why. I don't typically like paper. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Mr. Steve Reed, bid recommendations on the central HVAC equipment for Elkton Elementary.
Chair Lohr, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. I have two bid recommendations that I'm bringing before you this evening. And before I get into either one of them, I want to take a moment to explain what we're doing here. Both of these bids are for pre-ordering of equipment for the Elkton Elementary School.
That'd be my friend.
Love you too. It's here.
For the Elkton Elementary School renovation project. Due to. Is part of the general contractor scope as we typically would. So, we are pre-ordering this. And then, once we order. It will go out next November or December, that the general contractor will include that price in the scope of their work and their price. We're just basically guaranteeing to the suppliers that they will get paid. So, this money will not come out of our budget per se, but it'll come out of the budget as we pay the general contractor as they do the work at Elkton Elementary School that will go out to bid next year. So, we're pre-ordering this equipment so we have it in hand so that the general contractor will be able to, to perform the work as we need them to. So, with that said, the first bid we have here is for the central HVAC equipment for Elkton Elementary School renovation. We sent the three firms, which were the three firms that, when I say firms, they were suppliers, they were manufacturers, that the, our design team specified. We had one response, and that was from Train Technologies in the amount of $1,199,360. And our recommendation is to award that to Train Technologies.
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the contract for the central HVAC equipment for Elkton Elementary School to the low bidder, Train Technologies, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members.
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to reward the contract for central HVAC equipment to Elkton Elementary School to the low bidder as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for the main electrical components to the low bidder. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Did I say the wrong one? Did I drop? Did I jump? Okay, sorry. Let me restate. Follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for the central HVAC equipment to Elkton Elementary School to the low bidder. Thank you. Okay, now, let's vote on that in a minute. We'll come to the next one, right? All those in. Aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Oh, sorry. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, let's go on to the main electrical.
Yeah, so, so the next bid is for pre-ordering the main electrical components for Elkton Elementary School. And again, we sent them to three suppliers, three firms, three manufacturers. And we had one firm reply, Womack Electric Supply, quoting for Eaton electric components. And our recommendation is to award it to Womack Electric in the amount of $212,932.
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the contract for the main electrical components for Elkton Elementary School to the low bidder, Womack Electric Supply, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for the main electrical components for Elkton Elementary School to the low bidder as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? Hearing none. And this is why I repeat it, so we're all on the same page. All those in favor of following the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for the main electrical components to Elkton Elementary School to the low bidder. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We'll now move on to high school course offerings. And Ms. Liza Kaufman.
Good evening, Chair Lohr, members of the school board. Dr. Shiflett, thank you for letting me be here this evening and for presenting. You'll see in the agenda, linked in the agenda are the proposed high school course offerings for the 24-25 school year. You may notice that there are no changes. So, there, it is the same list from last year to this year. There are no additional courses proposed for next school year.
Great.
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the high school course offerings for the 2024-2025 as presented by Liza Kaufman, Director of Support Services.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. The chair will move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the high school course offerings for 2024-25 as presented by Liza Kaufman, Director of Support Services. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of accepting the high school courses that will be offered in the following school year? Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Dr. Shiflett, our superintendent first final, or first, what? First hundred days final update.
Yes, so the 100 days have come and gone. So, I believe it was November the 22nd would have been 100 school days or working days. I didn't count Saturdays and Sundays. Maybe I should have, but I didn't. So, just want to give the school board an update. Some of the stuff we've already kind of discussed, but just kind of want to bring a little bit of closure maybe to this. So, when I first interviewed and took this role as superintendent, I talked about four goals for my first 100 days. Student safety, achievement, and engagement was one sort of big area. Governance and school board relations was a second one. School and community relations, and establishing some goals to focus on for this current year, 23-24. So, in looking at student achievement and safety and looking at engagement, I met with all of our school principals, our directors, our supervisors, and sought out their targets that we needed to address and what should be our focus. We continue to conduct monthly meetings with our principal groups, with our central office staff. So, it's an ongoing process. So, it wasn't just a one and done. I met and talked to principals, and that was it. We continue to have this conversation around student safety and academic achievement and engagement. And then, our executive leadership team meets weekly. Somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four hours where we talk about more strategic planning, sort of bigger issues that we need to address as a school division. And then, we also meet every day for about 30 minutes where we really address sort of just topics that come up on a case-by-case basis. So, we can support each other and so that no one walks alone. We have each other, and it's also a collective brain power, right? There's a lot of, there's a lot of smart folks in that room. And then, every now and then, I show up, right? But, but Dr. Alderfer's there, and Dr. Painter, and Mrs. Abernathy, Mr. Moyers. And that group, they're all very talented at what they do. And so, it's just been a great system that we've added this year of this, what we call the huddle. 30 minutes every, every afternoon at 3:30. And talking about governance and school board relations, right? We know that there'll be new school board members coming on. And since the election, I have met individually with each new school board member and sat down and talked with them, listened about their priorities. and sat down and talked with them, listened about their priorities, and just began to build relationships because we need to be a team working together for the good of our students. And then we also have scheduled for that group a meeting with our school board attorney, just to give some legal updates. Because when they come into this role in January, when it comes to governance, they'll be, they'll need to know what's, what's coming ahead of them. In terms of school and community relations, I have met and continue to have meetings with elected officials, both at the county and state government, trying to build a strong partnership with Mr. Stephen King at the county administrative office and work with him. Continue when there's opportunities to meet with community leaders and business leaders. I've hosted advisory committees with parents twice, teachers twice, classifieds. The second one will be Wednesday this week, and with students once. And one little change that I did make to the advisory, something I learned from Bob Scott many, many years ago, is when people have a concern, you ask them to be part of the solution. So when they submit a concern, we definitely want to hear it, but we also ask them to bring a possible potential solution. Not saying that they have to have that solution, that that's the one we'll use, but we want people to be thinking about, okay, if this is a problem, how do we fix it? And so we've been working with that so far. I think we've had some good dialogue through those groups. And meeting with nonprofit groups, and going to Boys and Girls Club, or take, I think we're doing a tour, maybe the first day of winter break. Each Monday, I attend a regional superintendent's meeting so that I can keep a pulse on what's going around Region Five, other divisions. I've visited all schools at least once, beginning my second, maybe in some cases, third visits, depending on what's happening. I attend numerous sporting events. I try to get to something for every school, for each sport and activity, which keeps me busy, but I enjoy it. My wife is a good sport, so we just have lots of date nights and go watch basketball, or, you know, whatever's coming up, indoor track, I guess will be coming up soon, wrestling, those things. And fine arts, right? I mentioned earlier, I'm going to the next musical. I'm looking forward to that. And continue to communicate with our stakeholders, with our students and families, our faculty and staff, and trying to foster transparency. It's just an ongoing goal. It doesn't stop at day 100, right? We keep working with it. Some, some focus for this year, when it comes to safety, we have had conversations among ourselves about looking at hiring a school safety manager. Be something I would, I kind of would like to see us be able to do, someone who can be dedicated to that purpose. Safety is very important to me. We're working with fire and rescue to purchase some trauma kits. They're helping put those together and giving us an idea of, you know, kind of what do we need, and then we can purchase those things. And then working with Emergency Communications Center, ECC, to allow access to our cameras during an emergency. And so we got some things happening. We also, you're very aware of the key fobs that we'll be putting in our schools. And so we have some things on that front as well. Again, to keep safety as sort of the forefront. Achievement, we want to continue with our reading initiative to align with the Virginia Literacy Act. I was very disappointed that Dr. Coons wasn't able to come visit our Mountain View last week, but we're going to get a rain check and reschedule that. And we also had conversations with our administrators about improving SOL scores and trying to find spots where we're below the state average and get those scores where they need to be. To help with that, right, we're not just talking about it, but what can we do? So as you heard from Justin, there is an increased focus on tutoring. We have extra dollars to pay for tutoring, you know, after school, even some during the school day. But we also purchased a platform called Mastery Connect. And this is a platform where teachers can assign students benchmark tests, or even use it for practice SOL test, just to get them prepared to have some success in the spring. Again, I want to emphasize, you know, we want to give this some attention without making this the only thing that we're about, right? So how do we find balance? And then with engagement, we have been working on school attendance. And I think even the information that we will bring to the board and share in terms of chronically absent students, what that percentage is, I think will help the board have a better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. But that's, that's, that's important to us, and we're making some, we're gaining some ground. We're doing better with that. We appreciate our families rising to the occasion and getting students to school. We want to continue to promote hands-on learning with a focus on essential content, right? So we, again, we don't want to just go all in with, you know, how many questions can you get right on a multiple choice test? But we want the hands-on, the performance assessments, but we can't forget that knowledge matters, right? You can't apply knowledge that you do not have. It's impossible. And then to continue to streamline our communication process with families and staff to encourage effective communication. We want to make sure that we're getting our message out there to folks, so with clarity and transparency as much as possible. So this entry plan, again, that I had developed, sort of shaped my first 100 days, but it will continue to influence my work moving forward. And you can follow our progress in implementing our goals on the superintendent's page on our, on our website. So it's there for people to see, you know, when I, when I create a video, we send it out, we put it on the page so folks can go back, take a look at it. And we just want to, we want to continue, again, being transparent with folks. Onto the next 100.
You're good. Thank you very much. Members, do we have any questions? Great. Thank you. Looking forward to the next 100 days. Members, you have a financial review in your packet. And that concludes our information items for the evening. We will move on to other business, school board questions and comments. Mr. Dixon. Dr. McQuilkin.
Earlier this evening, Mr. Dixon and Lowell, Mr. Falk, and Mr. Breeden and I were honored at a, at a reception, and which we appreciated. And I talked about an education triangle, education in general, education in Virginia, and education in Rockingham County schools. This time, I'm going to talk about a pie. And the pie, at the center of this pie are students. And that's why we are here. First and foremost, we're here for the students. And everybody who is affiliated with Rockingham County Schools realizes that that is our mantra. Our mantra is, we're here for the students. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the people who are here every single working day that we're in school, and then in the summers as well, who work for our students. And I want to thank the teachers and the paraprofessionals, the building administrators, the central office staff, the support staff, like the bus drivers, and the administrative assistants in the schools and in the central office, the custodians, the maintenance, and the transportation department. All these departments have a role to play. All these apartment, all these departments are important. Each and every person who is affiliated and supports our students first are important because it takes all of us working together as a community to have Rockingham County be a school system that we are proud of. And not only proud of, we're proud of because these children are our future. And we, they deserve nothing less than our best. And then that brings me to my third topic of the evening, between the triangle and the pie, is the pillars. And everybody knows, and actually, people kind of make fun of the fact that I'm so, feel so strongly about the pillars, but I do. Because we, as, as an individual, should be caring, and we should be good citizens, and we should be fair, and we should respect others, and we should show responsibility, and we should be trustworthy. These are the pillars that we every day talk to our children about. There, whenever, every school that I enter has somewhere in there, and maybe more than many times, along, on the walls, on bulletin boards, they, they illustrate these pillars. And that's for our students, but for goodness sakes, it's for us. It's for all of us who work with the children. We. And that includes the board. We, as a board, must illustrate these pillars and be respectful and kind to other people. And that is my, my message to the new board coming on. Please remember to be kind, to be respectful, and foremost, first and foremost, put students first.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Cross, are you still with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
That's great. Glad to be here with you guys tonight. Thank you for approving the, I am, me to be able to attend digitally or by video here tonight. Hopefully my signal stays strong, as I have this moment to share with the board. The highlights, can you hear me still?
Yes, we can hear you. I muted my mic. Sorry. I'll keep it open.
That's, that's fine. My highlights for tonight was I had the, the opportunity to visit Elkton Middle School, and I visited Sarah Kaiser's Ag classroom. And she's doing such a wonderful job down there, and the kids absolutely love being in her classroom. The biggest thing, a challenge that she faces is not having enough room in that small shop class. So I am, that is definitely something as a board going forward that we're need to, we're going to have to look at at Elkton Middle School. And our construction projects, where they're at on the list. But I really appreciate Emily Holloway, Dr. Emily Holloway, inviting me down there to walk around and be with her and to just see what's going on, the fantastic things that they have going on at Elkton Middle School. And she's always been very, talk about the pillars of character tonight. She's always been very caring and very respectful towards me as a board member. So I would just want to say, I really appreciate Dr. Emily Holloway for the past two years showing such kindness to me coming on the board. And there was
Uh-oh. Did we lose you? You're still connected, so we'll give you just a second to cycle back through.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you're back.
I'm, I'm sorry. Did you hear me say thank you to Dr. Emily Holloway?
We lost you at the very end of thank you to Dr. Emily Holloway.
Okay. Well, the second highlight I have for the night is I had the opportunity to stop by Peakview Elementary School, and I had a chance to walk around Peakview and with Principal Jay Kapuchuk. And he is doing such a fantastic job with the limited space that he has there at Peakview. As you know, Peakview is also pretty crowded, and we're going to have to do something about that as well soon. So I just want to say thank you to Jay for all that he's doing there at Peakview Elementary School to serve our students. And he's absolutely doing his best job that he can to work with the limited space that he has, with the amount of students that he has there at Peakview. So, Mr. Kapuchuk, thank you again so much for your hard work and dedication towards our school division and definitely our kids. And I also had the invite to attend Ms. Alicia Correll-Clark's, who's a personal friend of mine. And I've been a part of that class that Dr. McQuilkin talked about. And teaching, I actually taught the law part to our children. One of the most important things for me as a school resource officer was to let the EL students know that I wasn't there to, as a police officer, to arrest our children, but I was there as a resource. And I wanted them to know that I was there to make them safe and feel safe while they're at school. So I absolutely love our EL program, and I'm attending another meeting that she's going to be having here as well pretty soon. I'm very connected with our EL program, and I've been advocating for us to do more for our EL kids over the past year and a half, as you're all well aware of. So thank you so much to Alicia Correll-Clark, or I'm sorry, Dr. Alicia Correll-Clark, for all that she's done. I'm, I also tonight just want to kind of end with some rumors that have been spreading around the community. And they're just rumors, they're lies. And I want to, you know, one of the rumors that's been talked about is that the new board is going to be coming on, and we're going to be firing Dr. Shiflett. And so on my missions trip, I reached out to Dr. Shiflett, because I take this role very seriously. And I remind, and I told him that none of the new school board members, or myself, have had any conversations about firing him as they come on. Listen, when we talk about respect, these board members that are coming on, they respect our division. They respect the role that they're going to be coming into. And so I was able to go to Richmond, and I'm with Board Member-elect Sarah Hurst, and also Board Member-elect Holly Cade. And we sat in on some school board governance training through the School Board Member Association. And it was great training in Richmond. We had a great time. And we're, we're so looking forward to coming on, and, or them coming on, and us serving our division. And as you talked about respect tonight, Dr. McQuilkin, one of the biggest things I could talk about respect is that we're going to respect our teachers. And when we have children that curse our teachers and call them curse words and say things to them, that is not going to be happening in our classrooms. If you cannot respect our, our teachers, we will find other ways for our children to get an education. But it disrupts the classroom, and it's also not good for the majority of the students that show respect to their teachers. But sitting on this board for the past two years and listening to the student discipline cases that's come before the board, and hearing some of the things that I hear these students cussing our teachers and the things they call them. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can still hear you.
Okay. But we are going to address respect within our division, and we're going to start with respecting our teachers. So as I've said before, I thank you, Board Member Falk. Thank you, Board Member McQuilkin. Thank you, Board Member Jack Dixon, for stepping in. I looked, I just thank you so much for all you've done, and thank you guys for taking the time to listen to me ramble on here, but it's not rambling because I take this position very seriously. And that's why I chose to zoom in tonight on a missions trip, which I had, I've had a great time ministering to thousands of young people here in Central America, offering them hope through Jesus Christ. So thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to returning, and we look forward to getting started in January with our new board and serving our awesome school division. So thank you. God bless you, and I thank you for allowing me to be a part of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cross, and thank you for your work in Honduras and El Salvador. Is that where you are?
I, I, we do in Honduras and El, and in El Salvador, but this trip has been focused on El Salvador. We've been down here for over 10 years, ministering to the awesome people of El Salvador. And we've spent a lot of miles on this trip, back and forth. We've been in the van over 18 hours in the past two days, going back and forth throughout the nation of El Salvador. And it's just been a great honor for us to do what we do. So I am very honored and humbled and privileged to do this, and this has been part of my work in life for over 20 years.
Wonderful. Well, well, thank you for doing that, and thank you for taking time out of that schedule to, to be with us tonight. Mr. Falk?
I'm out of words. It's been, been an honor working with you all.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett?
I just want to again say what an honor it's been to work with, with Jack and Dr. McQuilkin and Mr. Falk. And I'm going to miss you, and I'm looking forward to a new board coming in January. And I'm excited to work with them to do good things for Rockingham County Public Schools. Again, I think we're a great school division, but we can always be better. And I'm interested in looking at ways to make us better.
Yes, it has been an honor working and serving with each of you. And it, this is a service, and we do it for love of our students. So I was so glad that we got to have students here to celebrate, to celebrate with you guys on your last night. And you will be missed. And thank you again for your service. And what is it, like, over 700 years for Rockingham County from the, this, at the central office? It's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of expertise, a lot of, of love and caring in those years. And that, that extends to this board as well. So thank you all. And now, members, we have reason to go into closed session. Do I have a motion? You may get it.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A, one personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees, for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation, and A2, one disciplining or resignation, and A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on the inability to benefit from further education at school that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of entering closed session, please say aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. We are now in closed session. Thank you all for staying with us. Have a wonderful night and a wonderful holiday season.